And now we'll formally call today's meeting to order. City Clerk, would please call the roll.
Councilman DeCiccio. Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Valenzuela. Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pastor. Mayor Stanton.
I am here. Ms. Holmes, our interpreter is here with us. Please introduce yourself.
Buenas tardes. Me llamo Judy. Soy interprete de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you so much. Now we'll move on to citizen comments. Citizens have up to three minutes to address this council on any non-agendized items. Our first speaker for citizen comment is Mr. Leonard Clark, followed by Ms. Diane Barker.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm from beautiful District One, born right down the street also at the hospital there on McDowell. I just wanted to let you all know that I've been highly encouraged and inspired the last month or so, several months, especially seeing fellow Phoenicians helping each other. I know we have a long ways to go, myself included, but with the extreme heat that we're having and the fact that people can die when it's this hot, that we have people out there in organizations, you know, I've watched random people in their cars handing out cold bottles of water to homeless people. And despite all of the rancor and all of the argumentation, all of these things that go on, I really, at the bottom of my heart, I know that nobody believes this because of politics and all of the anger and the division that I've seen our city show a kindness amongst its citizens and, you know, to help people that you don't, you would not expect normally from a larger metropolitan area. I'm not saying we're utopia for my conservative friends and my liberal friends, but I am saying that, you know, rather than building up a box, calling you a Republican, a Democrat, out on the street, you're homeless or you're poor, you know what? That's the spirit of Phoenix. When a person is hot and thirsty, we help them. We hand a cold bottle of water. And I know I see you all out there doing that, too, trying to care for our citizens. So thank you very much for letting me speak. And thank you to the veterans who never came back and who served and gave me the right to speak at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Ms. Barker is next, followed by Mr. Rusnick.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Diane Barker. I'm District Seven. And believe me, Leonard Clark, we never ever got together to talk about what we would say today, but we're on the same idea. As I came over here today, I'm the girl on the bicycle with water. And I find people that are thirsty and all gifts amount, but I find that I end up drinking three of these and I have to go back to the Salvation Army and make a couple trips. But you know something? There is a barometer, and this is the temperature of kindness. As I was coming over here, I encountered a man that had a shirt on that was the color of mine and was loaded down on the bicycle. And I said, hey, it's a great bicycling day. And he goes in broken language, "I love you." And he offered me this hat, my visor. And so I'm saving this for my eternal temperature of the city of Phoenix of kindness that you can find in places that you might not expect. And so the other thing, yeah, I have a shirt on. I had a friend, Tanisa, who said, I want you to wear a shirt of fit Phoenix. And it's like, what do we do on Mondays? Get out. We get out and support downtown. We support not only Diana Trossi, gosh, she's the greatest female basketball. We support the Diamondbacks that are doing well. We get raffle tickets for this. We walk or we run, if you are of that, or we socialize and we get discounts from the retailers. This happens on Monday, but it could happen every night. And I want to invite you all to the oasis downtown in City Escape, which is Washington and First. And it's on Saturday. You can bring your family. I encourage you to try. Just why don't you do the one and five? Leave your car at home, find the bus route that will get you into the light rail. The light rail will bring you down right by First and Washington. From four to 10:00 PM is a water oasis. It's for the family and you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Mr. Rusnick, followed by Mr. Vasquez.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the oath of office. I know you took the oath and it says that you should abide by the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona. When I went to the service 60 years ago, I took the oath. And if I wouldn't abide by it, they'd have court-martialed me and done everything to get rid of me. But that didn't happen. I think that you guys ought to follow the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona. You don't do that. So what should we do? Do we get rid of you? How do we get rid of you? Maybe these people here who vote will maybe vote against somebody or vote against you. Well, the one thing about it, the oath, and here is the ordinance that goes by, you don't do anything. I talked to Thelda and she told me about this place that got 60,000 square feet of non-dust roof next door to me. And I know, and Thelda said, well, it's got a fence around it. There's nothing in the ordinance that mentions fence. So what are you doing? Just making all these excuses up to get away with it, to leave it the way it is. I don't know what are you getting? Probably some pittance from this man that's got this property. He's got 17 rentals. But here I have to put up with his dust. Thank you.
I thank you very much, Mr. Rusnick. Felix Vasquez, Mr. Vasquez.
Hello, everybody. My name is Felix and I came here to talk about the summer youth parole jobs budget cut that they're going to start doing. I know you, Mayor, have been a lot involved with Solutions City, trying to help youth getting involved into careers and jobs, as well as Laura Pastore being involved with Public Allies, trying to get involved, seeing how they can help nonprofits. The same with Danielle Valenzuela, when I was talking to you about how youth are trying to start little organizations to be able to challenge politics and see how we can make a better impact in our community. And the same with you, Raquel. I know you were there for the Caesar Chavez event, and I greatly appreciate that you're supporting art because art is another form of a career opportunity. And so I came to actually talk that if you guys do make these budget cuts, it's going to affect these youth professional skills, their job development skills, even if it's fast food works. It doesn't matter. If you're making some kind of money to prevent yourself from being in the streets, it's better to stay active and be doing something than to be running around with a bad crowd and causing more crime or more problems. So I would kindly ask if you guys could try to do something about that and help the youth so we can be able to make a change in the city of Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vasquez. We can't substantively respond. It's inappropriate. It's not an agendized item. Us, the city manager, if we can get the appropriate professional staff person to talk with Mr. Vasquez about what's being done with summer youth programs. So thank you for your advocacy. All right, that is all the cards we have for citizen comments. So we'll move on on today's agenda. Would our city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinances and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G-6333 through 6334, S-43579 and 43707 through 43770, and resolutions number 21553 through 21556.
I thank you very much. There are no minutes of previous meetings to be discussed, no boards and commissions today. So we'll move right on to liquor licenses. Vice Mayor, is there a proposed omnibus for liquor licenses?
Motion to approve items 1 through 18.
There is a motion. There is a second. There are, are there cards on those items? Are there a few but in favor of the proposal not wishing to speak? Okay. Any comments or questions, members of this council? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, Vice Mayor? We're on ordinances, resolutions, new business planning zoning. Do we have omnibus on those items?
Motion to approve items 19 through 124, except the following: 20, 27, 40, 47, 53, 60, 65, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 93, 95, 96, 98, 100, 101, 105, 111, 114, 124, and 77. Items 69, 71, and 72 have been continued to July 6, 2017. Items 123 is as corrected. And I believe I did all of it.
I thank you very much. Is there a second on that? A motion and a second on the proposed omnibus. Does any member of the council wish to remove any additional items to be heard? All right, so we, Councilman DeCiccio, are you on the phone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pastor just made an omnibus motion proposal for ordinances, resolutions, new business, and planning and zoning. So that's the item that's on the table. So there's a motion. There is a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the omnibus passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item number 20. Do we have a motion on item number 20?
I move item 20.
We have a motion in favor of item number 20. There's a second. Leonard Clark, you have testimony on item number 20.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leonard Clark. I live in Phoenix. I am strongly supporting this rule to fund, pay the payments due to the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality license. I just wanted to make a note, we might not be having to spend the money next year, you know, because of the fact that I guess they're proposing in Washington to repeal the Clean Water Law, which would give the EPA and probably by necessity, the ADEQ, the power to regulate, to look over our water for water pollution. So hopefully, actually, I don't believe that, but from a financial standpoint, you might not be paying the fees anymore because our illustrious president wants to repeal the Clean Water Rule. So your children can all have plenty of lead in their water next year in school. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. So there was a motion and a second. Any comments or questions by members of this council on 20? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item on the agenda is item 27.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Mr. Clark, did you provide testimony on item 27, Solarstar Arizona LLC?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. My name is Leonard Clark, and I just wanted to strongly urge you to vote for this. I think it's great that the, I guess, the water treatment plant will have solar power out there at Lake Pleasant, in the Lake Pleasant area. I'm just surprised you're able to fund it because of our illustrious friends in the Corporation Commission and APS doing their best to kill rooftop solar. So thank you while solar lasts. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
There's a motion. There is a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item is item number 40. Item number 40 is a proposed settlement of a claim involving the Phoenix Police Department. Is there a motion on item number 40?
Move approval. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are any cards on item number 40? Any comments by members of our city council?
Mayor?
Please.
And I'll be quick. And I'm not going to put staff in a weird position on this either. You know, whenever a police officer does something wrong, I'll be the first to point that out. But in this case here, our police department, our police officers have done everything right. They were within policy. They did everything perfectly right in this case. And I believe by paying this out, if that's a bad precedent, that if anyone gets enough press, claims whatever they want to claim, and then they're going to get a large payout at the end. But at the same time, I think it also sends a really bad message to our police department and to our police officers. And I'm going to be opposing this payout, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes seven to two. Next item on the agenda is item 47. Item 47 is the swearing-in for Municipal Court Judge Carol Scott Berry. We've already approved this item previously, I believe. So today is the date for the swearing-in. Judge Berry, I would ask you come behind the dais and let's get it nicely framed right below the Phoenix bird to do the actual swearing-in. Family, friends, supporters, who's here for the party, come on down. All right, Judge Berry, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Carol Scott Berry.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
of the United States
Of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws
And the Constitution and laws.
of the state of Arizona
Of the state of Arizona.
and that I will bear true faith
And that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
and defend them against all enemies
And defend them against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
and impartially
And impartially.
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of the office of
Of the office of Phoenix municipal.
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations once again. And let's get the whole council in for a good shot. The whole council, get in for a good shot. Good photo. We are lucky to have the best municipal court in the entire state of Arizona, and Judge Berry is a big reason why. All right, let's move forward with our agenda. Next item on the agenda is item 53, a proposal to enter into a lease agreement with MAG. Vice Mayor, is there a motion on 53?
Move approval 53.
Is there a motion? There is a second. Any comments or questions by members of this council? Any cards on 53? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. It should be noted that I voted on this item, but as Chair of MAG, I did not participate in any discussions on the MAG side of things. Okay, item number 60 is next. Is there a motion on 60?
Move item 60.
Yes, on 60, and there is a second. Item number 60 concerns authorization to sell city-owned property along North Valley Parkway, south of West and Orange Drive. Leonard Clark, you had comments on that item?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leonard Clark, and I do support this. I just was hoping that in the future, when you have such measures, if, I'm not sure if Arizona law would preclude it. I know at the federal level they do it. But could you sometimes, if we have a valuable property with an historic building, such as the one that's going to be destroyed on Fourth Avenue in the future, you know, that's over 100 years old, one of the first buildings built, could we ever end to end to agreements with the developers or the owners of the property to say, hey, this is a valuable piece of property. Will you consider trading it so that we can keep, you know, with the piece of property you have, preserving the building that's a part of city of Phoenix history? I'm just asking that you consider that. I don't know if state law precludes it, but I do know they do something like that with the environment in the federal level. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We have a motion in favor. We have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, and now we'll move on to item 65. Is there a motion on 65?
Move approval.
There's a motion. There is a second. I have two cards here, one from Stan Lubin and a second from Ray Kell. Mr. Lubin?
Discrepancy. Thank you. I'm here on behalf of AFSCME Local 2384. We've had some problems with the language of the proposed rule. I've been talking with your Labor Council in the hallway this last few minutes, and I think we feel we can work it out, but I don't think we can do it this quickly. The problem is this. The rule is written to conform to the state statute that was enacted last year by the people of the state. However, it's, the policies of the city are different than what the state statute provides for. Number one, you have more leave than the state requires. Number two, you have more restrictions on how it can be used. So there's more and there's less. And what I'm trying to come up with is language that says that, of course, I'd like to see you go to the state statute for all the leave you've got. That would make it a lot easier and a lot fairer, in my view. But if you can't do that, at least I'd like to see something said that the city employees will understand in non-lawyer lease English that would say something to the effect of the statutory requirements, the leaves that fit within that will be handled differently than the leaves that fit outside of that but within the city's requirements above and beyond that. We're trying to come up with some language on it. I think we will. But in all honesty, I cannot support this the way it is currently written, and I would ask you to send it back with that in mind.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lubin. Great to see you. Ray Kell is next.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Ray Kell. I'm a city of Phoenix resident, an employee for the city of Phoenix Fire Department for 14 years, and an officer for AFSCME Local 2960. Councilman Mayor, I would like to comment on the proposed ARs being submitted as an interim policy regarding the new earned paid sick time benefit that was voted on by the citizens of Arizona. Even though the new law states that the 40 hours of earned paid sick time is a minimum and can be higher, the city of Phoenix has chosen to put a cap on the earned hours available to the employees to use as paid sick time benefit, and this concerns us. By doing so, we now have multiple policies in place on using our paid sick leave and vacation leave, causing higher confusion. We are being told that the cities of Mason Tempe have listened to the voters and have made all of their city employees sick leave, protected sick leave under the new law. This allows their employees to use their sick leave with less restrictions, which in a climate of low morale and reduced benefits shows me that they value their employees more than Phoenix is showing they do by this policy. Besides confusion for the employee, supervisors, and payroll when having to utilize this paid sick leave benefit and determine how it will be coded, this also makes us employees feel like the city of Phoenix is trying to skirt the law in order to retain the right to potentially use paid sick leave against us as corrective or disciplinary action. This law was made to redefine minimum wage and sick leave laws. The city of Phoenix puts themselves at risk of grievances and lawsuits by their interpretation of what the citizens of Arizona voted for. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much for your testimony. That's all the testimony we have on this item. I would ask our city management, I know we have at least one more meeting before our break. I think Mr. Lubin has brought up some important issues. Ray Kell brought some issues, particularly as it relates to how other cities are interpreting. Maybe we can get that, have that information before this council, before we make decisions. So I'd ask if we continue it until our next meeting. So my motion is to continue it until July 6.
Six.
Is there a second on that?
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, of course, Council, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm fine with continuing. I want to make sure we follow the law, whatever the law is. But I'd also like to get a better perspective of how much sick leave we have outstanding right now. I think I asked for a report, this is like five years ago. So I'd like to get an update on that, if I could, to the city manager. I'd like to know how many hours of sick leave we have available, or how many have been collected by our employees, and then how many employees we have.
All right, so the council wants a briefing on, like, I guess, larger sick time issues. And so I think the city manager will give you a full briefing on that.
Well, I'd rather, I'd just like to have him put it in writing, if it's okay, Mayor. If we could do that, just how many hours of sick leave have been collected to date? We, I did a, I did a look at this several years ago. Like I said, it was about five years ago. And we're paying out, I think, close to, I think it was about eight and a half to $10 million a year on when people retire and how much money are collected at retirement. But I'd just like to get an idea of how much we have complete sick leave right now from all employees.
All right, excellent. Thank you for the request.
Thank you, Mayor.
I know the city manager's taking notes. All right, so the motion is to continue until July 6. There's a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We look forward to getting, having this item at our next city council meeting with that additional information. Next item on the agenda is item 77. Is there a motion on 77?
Move approval.
Motion, a second. Mr. Leonard Clark, do you have testimony on 77?
Thank you, Mayor. I just also want to thank you as a citizen of Phoenix. My name is Leonard Clark. The increase in funding you're going to put forth for the central Arizona Shelter Services, I know I didn't say it exactly right. The main thing is, we all feel horrible when we see our fellow human beings who are homeless, and especially in this type of heat. So I feel that at least you are responding. I know some people will never be satisfied from whatever direction that they're coming from about regards our homeless brothers and sisters that are outside of this building and I probably, the people are watching outside in their neighborhood right now. But at least you're doing something. You're increasing funding, and I hope you will vote in support of this. Thank you.
I thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council on item 77? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams. Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. Next item, Vice Mayor?
I would like, item 83, I would like to see if we, 83, 84, and 85 can go together. Okay.
83, 86.
Together, 83 and 86 together? Okay, 83 and 86.
There's a motion in favor of 83 and 86. There is a second. Any cards on those items? Any comments or questions, members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
No. No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so that item passed seven to two. Now on eighty-four and eighty-five, is there a motion on eighty-four and eighty-five?
Move eighty-four and eighty-five.
Second.
There's a motion. There is a second. Uh, any cards? Any questions or comments?
Just a question.
Councilman Waring, please.
Thank you. So for staff who's walking up, uh, these are basically safety items for public facilities, or at least public property. They're art that serves a, not only a useful purpose, but a necessary purpose. Is that a fair statement?
I apologize. Uh, Mayor, Councilman Waring, could you repeat the question?
So these, uh, this isn't just, just art, not that that would be in itself a bad thing, but this is, this is a security, we'd have to do something else if we weren't making the fences and so forth look nice. We'd have to put up something else.
So Catherine Swanson, our Water Services Director, can answer that.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilman Waring, that's absolutely correct. So the primary purpose is safety and security, but of course, we want our facilities to also be an amenity for the community, um, not an eyesore. So we work very collaboratively with the Arts Department to make sure that our facilities are safe, but also pleasing to our community.
Thank you. I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman, please.
Yeah, and I'd just, uh, thanks staff for this. Uh, back in the nineties, and I think Councilwoman Williams and I were leading the charge on this, what we did is, we took a look at our entire art budget that we required to do, the one percent for art, and literally updated that and made it into all functional things that could be done. And this is all in, you know, this all falls in line with what was approved back in the nineties in that policy, and it's still there today, where, you know, the city was facing enormous criticism at the time of spending monies on things that just didn't make sense. Now what they're doing, and I think they're doing an amazing job at it, they're literally including art into safety fixtures, fixtures, into, um, things that are functional, and I just want to thank the Water Department for doing that.
I think very much, Councilman DeCiccio. All right, we have a motion in favor. We have a, uh, second. Any additional comments or questions by members of the council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, uh, that item passes nine zero. All right, next item on the agenda, Vice Mayor.
Item eighty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and second on eighty-seven. Uh, Councilman Waring, do you have any comments on that item? Cards on that item? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego. Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. Seven to, I apologize, seven to, my, my fault. Seven to two. Next item on the agenda is item ninety-three.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, I apologize. Eighty-eight. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on item eighty-eight, which happens to be in your district?
Yes, I move item eighty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Cards on eighty-eight? Any comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes eight to one. Next item on the agenda, now we're on ninety-three. Is there a motion on item number ninety-three?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion. There is a second. Any cards on that item? Any comments by members of our, uh, of our city council? Um, I'll say something. Uh, I've worked very closely with this firm. The entire time I've been, uh, mayor, we've made huge advancements, particularly with our trade relationship with Mexico. We've successfully opened up two trade offices, one in Mexico City, the other in Aramo City. We're making great strides, and, uh, Melara Alvarez has been just, uh, hugely helpful in that regard, and we wouldn't have made the progress we have without their outstanding support. And so I want to thank them, and we'll certainly be supporting the item. All right, uh, next, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so that item passes eight to one. All right, um, next item is item number ninety-five. Is there a motion on ninety-five?
Move approval.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Councilwoman Gallego, do you have questions or comments?
Yes, uh, this item, I need ninety-five, has to do with, uh, issuing education facility revenue bonds in Henderson, Nevada. Um, and I just wanted to, not having visited Henderson recently, make sure their local elected officials are supportive of this and aware.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Gallego, Paul Blue, uh, with the City Manager's Office. I'm here with John Salgado from the IDA, and John can, uh, can address your questions directly.
Uh, Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, uh, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask the applicant to join us up front, and then they can talk about their diligence in the community there.
Thank you.
Is Terry Warren the applicant?
No, it's, uh, Corey Kennedy.
Mr. Corey Kennedy, okay. Mr. Kennedy, the question has to do with your outreach to the municipal, uh, folks in Henderson, Nevada.
Uh, absolutely. In fact, um, I can answer that question, but so can Matt Werner, our, uh, who's, who's had more detailed conversations with those city officials. But so far, uh, they've been supportive and, uh, helpful and looking forward to the project in general terms.
And, um, have you worked with, uh, we've had some issues with Safe Routes to Schools. Have you worked with their local streets department and they're supportive and believe the school is appropriately located?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, there are, uh, between crosswalks and the, uh, driveline system that uses technology to keep the kids in the classrooms until the last minute when their parents are ready to pick them up. It's a great system that, uh, highlights safety quite a bit.
And while you're there, are you also the appropriate person to ask the same two questions about item ninety-six?
Yes, and, and the answers would be the same, um, for that, both of those projects.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right now, the motion is on ninety-five, uh, but we, we pulled both those items because of the questions that Councilwoman Gallego have. Do we want to add ninety-six to the motion, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, there's separate cards in ninety-six? I apologize. Let's just do ninety-five then. I apologize. Uh, so the motion is in favor of ninety-five. There is a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so, uh, item ninety-five passes unanimously. Next item is item number ninety-six. Do we have a motion on ninety-six?
Move ninety-six.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Leonard Clark, did you have testimony on ninety-six? IDA, proposed IDA, uh, bonds for Legacy Traditional in East Mesa.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leonard Clark. Uh, first, let me just preface this by saying, we have a difference of philosophical, uh, belief here. So it's nothing personal against you and our good friends on the Phoenix Industrial Development Authority Board, which you, Mayor Stanton, have appointed, like the other mayors before you. I just have to take issue, and again, nothing personal, but philosophically with the fact that when we approve the bonding, twenty-two million approximately in tax-free, municipal-free bonding, money that could be going back into the tax coffers that's being tax-free, I feel that that is not right. Now, here's why. Number one, um, public, uh, schools, and by the way, I hope you will all remember, when they come knocking on your doors, council members and mayor, when people in your school district need an, uh, a bond override, because they have to knock on hundreds of thousands of doors, parents have to volunteer, everybody goes out and tries to get that done, because they can't come to you, nine members on the council, and say, "Hey, we need twenty-two million, five hundred thousand for the PRA School District," if you were the PRA City Council, or Phoenix Union High School District, whatever. They can't come and get the money through nine votes. They have to go, like, on nine hundred thousand doors, nine thousand doors, whatever. They have to go out and get that money. Um, secondly, the practices that, you know, right now in the state of Arizona, there are huge loopholes about contracts and things. On a public school, if I'm a family member on a school board, I can't hire, you know, my son-in-law to be like the main air conditioning service provider. I'm not supposed to, or I go to jail. But with charter schools, I'm not saying with this one, corporate charter schools, you can do that. Parents also, when they can go to, uh, the American tradition is, if you don't like what your school board members are doing, you can go complain. If you still don't like what they're doing, you can try to get a recall, because it's a public election. But this is a board of directors, and even if it is not for profit, the problem is that the people who sometimes, maybe not in this case, start a charter school, found a for-profit management company, which in turn lets them have a profit. Um, I got this off of, uh, RestoreReason.com, and it says, "Unfortunately, today's charter schools are an entirely different animal than Shanker envisioned." So anyways, he envisioned that they're basically segregated a lot more, and it's harder, and remember, we just had some folks talking that there's no bus service. So I also hope you're do, working on that bus service now, where our kids don't have to pay to get to the charter schools. But I totally respect your right to disagree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. We have a second. Any additional comments and questions? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Uh, next item on the agenda is item number ninety-eight. We have a motion on ninety-eight?
Move ninety-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and second ninety-eight. Any cards on ninety-eight? Any comments or questions by members of our council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Uh, yes, uh, sending it. Eight to one. All right, passes eight to one. Next is one hundred. Is there a motion on one hundred?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Any cards? Comments or questions by the council on one hundred?
Mayor?
Councilman, please.
I'll, I'll just be very quick, and I can include this in one oh one, but it's really about one hundred. I want to make sure the public understands, this is one point two five million dollars for surveys of passengers at our airport. I think it's a giant waste of money. I am just surprised that people aren't even using the internet. I think the internet's old enough now to where people would be accustomed to that, rather than walking around with a billboard, uh, with a, uh, a sheet of paper and taking down information. And plus, a million and, a million and a quarter for a survey is an insane amount of money. And so, you know, especially with having people, people with clipboards standing around, talking to people that are coming off and on planes. So I'm going to be voting no on this, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, uh, Councilman. Jim Bennett is coming forward, along with Paul Blue, uh, to explain why staff is recommending this contract for customer data, uh, information for our airport. Paul or Jim? Mr. Bennett? As well as Deb Osterker.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, members of the council. Uh, why are we doing this? It's been almost ten years since the last time, uh, the cities, uh, started understanding who their passengers are, and the information that is collected from this survey, and it's not a one-time thing, it's a continuous perpetual surveying of our customers. It is fundamental to the development of additional international air service, such as the recently announced Condor flight to Frankfurt, but it's also fundamental to all of the other services that we provide, uh, the forty-four million or so customers that go through our facilities each and every year. And we don't right now know any, we have no information about these customers and what they want, the services that they need, and how we can better serve them and be more efficient.
And Mayor, just to add to what Mr. Bennett said, to clarify, this is one point two five million over five years.
Five years.
And it is not a survey, as Mr. Bennett said, it is multiple surveys, but it's five years aggregate.
We're collecting a lot of data about, uh, individual use Sky Harbor Airport. What will that information be used for, and who will it be used by?
Uh, Mayor, uh, members of the council, the information will be used by us in terms of assessing our, uh, services that we are providing, and also as we try to attract additional international air services and domestic services into Phoenix. And the information, examples of the type of information that we will be collecting is, how do people get to the airport? How many of our customers are taking Uber or Lyft, or how many people are taking taxis? And where did they come from? What part of the valley do they live in? Where are they going? How many international trips do they take every year? Just basic demographic information that is fundamental to providing, uh, customer service and, uh, making sure that we are meeting their expectations.
Is it, is this information requested by airlines that may be looking to either increase service, provide new service at Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport?
Indubitably. It is, uh, when we are working with airlines, as Ms. Osterker can tell you, uh, we are making air service calls with one arm tied behind our back, because we don't have this information.
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, the only thing I would add to that, Mayor, is because we are a location both for American and Southwest, where, uh, they are often taking a flight from Phoenix to another, uh, destination, and then someone's either getting on a different airplane or getting on a completely different flight, we and the, in some cases, the airlines have no idea what's actually transpiring after they have landed in the next city in the United States. The only way to get after that kind of data, which has been a miss for us for four decades, is to talk to the customer.
Thank you. Other comments or questions, members of the council? Councilman Gallego?
If we conducted the surveys via internet, would it be a less accurate sample size than doing research in places like post-security at the terminal?
Uh, Mayor, to Councilwoman Gallego, uh, yes, it would not be, it would not accurately capture the information that we need, because we're going to be focusing on people that are sitting in those hold rooms, have time to work with our survey, uh, professionals that'll be in there assessing, uh, the information, and then it gives you the ability to follow up and get clarifications, should, uh, the question, uh, not be received correctly by the customer.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would just add one thing. As, as you and, as councilmembers have noted, we, uh, were named as a, the top city in the United States for being able to innovate. One of the aspects of being able to innovate and be successful is basing informations based on accurate data. And so this is part of our effort to make data-based decisions, and so we think this is extremely important.
Thank you so much. Any other questions by members of our council? Or comments? Here. Councilman, Valenzuela, please.
I appreciate it. So this is a sophisticated, this is sophisticated information that we need to compete. We're the fifth-largest city in the country. What we have is, is an incredible asset. It's the largest economic engine we have in, in the city, and frankly, the state. Uh, it's one of the ten busiest airports we have in the country. As an example, you, you brought up the, the really exciting news, the recent news. Congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work, uh, on the new, uh, direct flight to Germany. Just, uh, you know, when it comes to, to international flights in Phoenix, it adds over three billion dollars to the local economy each year, per your, your last, uh, study. And it's, it's not just because we have lots of sunshine and, uh, you know, great swimming pools. We need real information to compete in this very real business. So to reduce it down to just a few people walking around with clipboards, I, I think we're missing the point there. I think we're missing, frankly, the business acumen to make a decision like this. So I am totally supportive of this. There's a proven track record of why it's important, and if we want to stay competitive, these are the things that we have to do to stay competitive. So thank you for bringing it before this council, and I'm supportive.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the item passed is seven to two. Next item on the agenda is item number 101? We have motion 101.
Sorry, I'm reading something. Move approval?
We have a motion. Yes, count says move approval.
Yeah, move approval, I'm sorry. I was talking on my log.
All right, and we do have a second from Councilwoman Williams, I believe, or Councilwoman Gallego, whoever got it first, but there is a second. Any other, is there comments by members of the council on item 101? Okay. Any cards? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Nope.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item also passed is seven to two. 105 is next.
Move approval.
The motion, is there a second? There is a second? Okay, got it. Motion is second.
Mayor, can I make a comment on this one?
Yeah, please.
You know, one of the challenges we have with the new system, our light rail, is the fact that people do not feel safe. And this is an effort to really boost our presence, as well as to make sure that the platforms are safe. And this is extremely important, I think, for the rail to continue in a very safety factor. So I think this is important. It's, we all get the emails, and we are showing the effort. And I will tell you, our PTA is also putting money into this effort. So this is our share in the city of Phoenix, as well as the other cities are putting extra in their area. So I commend staff. They've been very good about following up on this, coming up with an affordable plan that we think will really make a difference. So thank you all.
Any other comments? Roll call. Okay. Councilman Waring.
I was going to explain my vote on this. So I'm not in favor of light rail. Obviously, we all want it to be safe. There's no light rail dollars being directed to my district too. I think it's the only district that gets no light rail dollars. But one issue I had brought up at least once at a council meeting, and I brought up in other venues, is safety and whether the light rail is transporting crime to neighborhoods. Now, I'd had people I respect, doctors, doctors' offices, contact me about this very issue, particularly along 19th Avenue. Was told there was nothing to it. Then there was a pretty big story in the Republic saying, "Well, there were actually a few number of complaints along that same line." When I had my briefing about this last week, really, I think you're talking about sending the officers basically to 19th Avenue. And my understanding of it was this money could have been spent on equipment for police, or it could have been spent having officers patrol public transportation facilities in District Two. So I am a little bit torn on this because there's clearly a need on 19th Avenue, a need I was told did not exist and wouldn't exist, and now we're claiming it's a big problem. We got to redirect officers over there. That's frustrating just in and of itself. But I also have to represent my constituents, who are getting the shaft on this whole deal. So, which I can also speak about more if you'd like me to on my vote on item 111. But it's not fair, and so it's sort of a protest vote. I'm sure this will pass, but I'm voting no.
So my question to that is, my understanding, at least in the subcommittee, is that $600,000 is being allocated towards transit safety. And I think our line is big enough or long enough, other than 19th Avenue. So is it specifically being dedicated to 19th Avenue?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, I'm here with Maria Hyatt, Police Transit Director, and Commander Brad Burt from the Police Department. I will let Commander Brad Burt answer that question, but, yes, Commander.
Mayor Stanton and Vice Mayor Pastor, members of the council. The reason why we're asking for the four additional officers or positions to be able to augment the existing four is to allow us that flexibility. Of course, initially, our first process involved focused, or focusing on 19th Avenue. The extra duty, of course, is proactive, as opposed to reactive, and it, we've seen some success. The activity that we're experiencing, at least from our stats, has been encouraging. So what we like to do, of course, is to have that flexibility to move throughout that whole line, not only just the 19th Avenue corridor, which happens to be between, we call it that way, between Camelback and Dunlap. We also have that eastward extension that runs through the airport that has some issues as well. So that gives us that, again, that proactive arm that allows us to address any issues along that eastern line.
So what I'm hearing is the entire line. I just want to make sure. Okay.
I'd like to respond to that, then.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Well, I heard we're definitely focused on 19th Avenue, and in my here, my individual meeting, it was all about 19th Avenue, complaints about 19th Avenue. So while that may let them redirect the other four officers elsewhere, it's pretty much, we're doing this because of 19th Avenue.
I think we're doing it because of transit safety across the line, and there are several hotspots across the line. And adding more officers or security onto the line is only going to help us augment behavior happening on the line. So I understand it's not just 19th Avenue, it's across the whole line.
Oh, Vice Mayor Pastor, that's correct.
Okay.
And certainly, the issue that Councilman Waring brought up is a concern of ours, necessarily, crime is just not necessarily occurring, or at least issues aren't occurring, just on 19th Avenue, but they could possibly be a feed from outside areas. So addressing the whole line is the idea, as far as being proactive.
Okay, sure.
Good. So we could add then to this motion, a year from now, I'd like to know where these officers spent the bulk of their time. So a year from now, I'll be curious to see that report.
I did the first, I said, so add it to it, add it to the motion, and then, or we would like data demonstrating the line, showing what's, where, I believe, we would like adding more four officers, what the impact is on the line and across, across over a year progress. Any question?
So the motion is not just for officers, if they wanted to do police assistance or investments in technology, we could also, it is money for security. It's not committing us to officers only?
Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, yes, as the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee approved in their motion, this would allow flexibility to also allocate hours to police assistance. For example, if that were deemed by the Police Department to be a more appropriate use of those resources, and achieving that combination between the sworn officers and the police assistance.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm assuming those numbers are going to be kept. I mean, Phoenix PD keeps track of calls for service, you know, where some of the resources should be going. Obviously, we're adding new officers, where those, what precincts need them based on calls for service. So I assume that goes without saying, but I'm glad that members of this council want to put it on the record. We'd like to see where the calls for service are, you know, where officers are being responded to. I do appreciate Councilwoman Gallego's comment that this is about security, whether it's officers. I'd like to see more technology personally. You know, 19th Avenue is a line that I'm passionate about. I work closely with every one of those businesses there, the clergy, the schools. Already, you see lots of new development coming through. You know, as someone who takes light rail, and obviously, you know, there are, there's crime that happens throughout the city, and it's become very popular to point at light rail. And I don't, I don't think that's necessarily fair, but let's just go along with that for just a moment. If I were getting calls from people that I respect along 19th Avenue, doctors and so on and so forth, concerned about the crime regarding light rail, I would be supporting this. I'm not sure how I would be able to acknowledge that there is crime along 19th Avenue. I don't know how I would face the residents of that area, whether they're in my district or not, or the business owners in that area, whether they're in my district or not, and say, "You know, I'm not even going to support more policing or more security along that line." I'm not sure where the logic comes from. You know, Councilman Waring has his hand up, so maybe he'll tell us. The point is, this is the right thing to do. Public safety is a number one priority of any government, and it certainly is a number one priority here in Phoenix, and I'm supportive of this item.
Councilman Waring.
First, I'd blame the people who brought light rail to my neighborhood in the first place, but I guess apart from that, I've got a report that I asked for, for item 111, so we can just talk about it now. Light rail, we get zero of that in District Two. No light rail. So anybody who's on, riding the light rail, who's a police officer, is not protecting residents of District Two. District Two also has 14.5% of the street mileage and some of the more mediocre streets in the city, but it's actually getting less of the program pavement miles in item 111. Part of the reason there's such a shortage of money for streets is because we're spending so much on light rail, which is more than a little frustrating. That money that we're talking about in this item, item 105, so that money could have been used for stuff in District Two, but it's by definition not going to be, at least the light rail portion, because we don't have light rail in our district. So I guess that's where the logic comes from. I'm trying to stick up for my residents, who frankly get short-sheeted at just about every opportunity by the city, and it's very frustrating to watch this. So you're right, I was conflicted because the city has brought a problem to a neighborhood, didn't necessarily have one before, denied that it was going to be a problem, continued to deny it, and now is saying, "Oh, well, now that there's a problem, we're going to have to do some minimal steps to fix it." So that's the logic. It's more than a little frustrating to listen to this, and I don't know. It's somewhat appalling, actually. But thank you for the chance to respond.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. I've got two comments. One, it sounds like only Phoenix has a problem on the light rail, and that is not the case. We deal, whether it's Mesa, Chandler, Tempe, or Phoenix, where the light rail goes through, we all have the same challenges, often the same people, because they get on and go from one end to the other. And I just wanted to make the record clear that it's making it sound like it's concentrated on this narrow area, and that is not the case. I am very confident that the extra manpower, the agencies that are working with us are going to really get a handle on some of the problems. The extra lighting on the platforms, I think, will also diminish some of the people who like to hang around there and cause trouble. So I really want to commend you for doing that. Now, changing a little bit, if you notice, District One doesn't have light rail. I'm doing my best to get it there, but we don't have any. And if you look at the mileage, I don't think District One gets its fair share either. But I also understand that part of my district is newer, the roads aren't as bad in part of the northern areas as the lower areas. But I will tell you, I fully supported the tax proposition because it did include money for roads. And we were on a 65-year cycle to maintain our streets and roads in the city. And we had gone too long, and they had become disastrous in some areas. I mean, they were, to me, boarding on dangerous. They were torn up some of the local streets. We were down to gravel, there was no longer asphalt on them. I am delighted that we got this money, and that much was allocated towards streets, especially in the northern area. I know that we have, considering the newer ones, but some of the newer ones are 20 years old, and I just want to keep that in mind. So that's my two cents.
Councilwoman Stark.
Yeah, I agree with Councilwoman Williams. We don't have light rail in District Three either, Jim. But I suspect every now and then, residents from District Two and Three hop on the light rail and use it for some purposes, whether it's to park at Camelback and Central and go down to a game. So I do think that security is also protecting residents of districts that don't have light rail. Having said that, I would also agree that we do represent some newer parts of the city, and so there may be some, you have to look at that as part of, as part of the formula for paving. There is also a lot of private streets in my district. So there's, you know, the issue of the local streets may not be as pressing in some parts of the city as well, but to say, and I understand what you're saying, Jim, proportionately, on light rail, you probably don't have a lot of District Two people. But I suspect there are people from every district that ride the light rail.
Councilman Waring.
So I was talking prospectively on the 2050 Plan, so there's that. We're the only ones that get zero all the way through. So in 2050, middle-aged guy now, I'll be 82, so this is really the plan for my lifetime, considering that light rail is eight or nine billion dollars in the plan, and street repair is $1 billion. And when I go out and knock on doors, the most recent time I did it was Monday night, couldn't do it last night because I had my district meeting, and what do I get? Night after night, complaints about streets. To these people's point about, or these members' point about where new districts and so forth, District Two has the fourth best, or fourth worst, I guess however you want to put it, average pavement condition index, if you looked at the packet. So we certainly don't have the newest streets, and they're the best, they're fourth. But we get zero of the eight to nine billion of light rail, and we get the $6 million a year that $1 billion over 30, a year over 35 years, or $1 billion, excuse me, over 35 years penciled out to. So we get about $6 million a year. Everywhere they build light rail, they get brand-new streets. Don't get that in District Two. So yeah, do I have a legitimate grievance? Absolutely. I heard Councilwoman Williams say, "Well, the problem with light rail isn't just localized on 19th Avenue, it's the entire system." Fantastic. That didn't make me feel a whole lot better. And so for this problem that the city brought to any of your neighborhoods, if you're by a stop and you're having problems, remember, this city brought you those problems, and now they're putting basically a pittance, potentially up to, I guess, four officers, to try to fix it. That doesn't really sound like it's going to fix it, to me. So there's a whole host of problems with this. There's a whole host of problems with the transportation package that passed in 2015. As we continue, and I think Mr. Zirker has heard me complain about the streets and has acknowledged that maybe there's room for improvement, but of course, we don't have the money for improvement, we've diverted it to something else, something that it sounds like is bringing problems to neighborhoods, after the city said that it wouldn't. So, and we don't have the best streets, they're not newer, they're not better, they're fourth. So I think I have a legitimate grievance. I was sticking up for my districts. You guys wanted to make it a debate? I'm ready to declare victory and go home, but just kidding, just kidding. But that's it. I've said my piece, and actually, you got rid of me on number 111 as well. I said my piece about that, too. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Williams.
If I could just make a comment, I didn't mean to make it sound like this whole route is dangerous, because it is not. When you look at the number of incidents that have happened, they're very few when you consider the number of people that ride it. And when you talk about whether it's Mesa or whether it's Phoenix, it's a growing system. I know that Councilwoman Waring is not a transit fan, but I happen to be one. I believe that we need multimodal opportunities. The more people we have on the train, the less traffic on the streets, and the longer they're going to last. So I'm a big supporter of this, but I wanted to ensure you that light rail is safe, and I encourage people to take it. And District One, I know residents do bring it down to the ballgames, and we've taken some of our residents on a tour, some of them especially, who thought it was a horrible idea, didn't believe in it, until they saw what happened along the route. And the seven or eight billion dollars worth of development that's occurred, and what it brings to the area, in my mind, it's more than paid for itself. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilman Valenzuela, and then Councilman DeCiccio.
Thank you. The reason I support light rail, and frankly, the Northwest extension on 19th Avenue is for, there's multiple reasons, but the overall, the big picture for the city, the economic development, the return on investment, seven to one return on investment, it's a four to one nationally, but in Phoenix, in the Phoenix Valley, we've seen even a bigger investment. I believe it, along with ASU Downtown, has been the catalyst to move downtown Phoenix forward, which benefits every district. And, you know, I'll take you on a tour, taking people on a tour, and you can see the ROI and the development from a quarter mile in either direction throughout the entire line, and you already start to see it in District Five on 19th Avenue. That was one of the primary reasons, along with the new infrastructure. See, I know that area very, very well. And so, an area, especially 19th Avenue, with aging infrastructure, you know, I mean, you talk to some of the construction crews as they're digging, some of these pipes were ready to burst, in fact, lots of pipes were bursting anyway. And that's how old a lot of this infrastructure was. While that's been replaced, that's good for the community, that's actually neighborhood revitalization. And yes, transportation. That line connects seven schools, places of worship, hospitals, grocery stores, and not only does it connect those residents in that area, but it connects people to those residents and vice versa. People can get to work, school, again, places of worship, and so on. There's a couple of retirement facilities that are in the area, people are able to use light rail to get around. It's been a very valuable tool for us. Now, I supported Proposition 104, and people dubbed it, in fact, there are a couple of people on this council that dubbed it the whole light rail tax. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, 15%, 1.5%, 15% of the new tax goes to light rail. We're talking, you know, street repair, getting on a good, the cycle that we needed to get to, to repave all of our streets, create new streets. By the way, District Five is a very densely populated By the way, District Five is a very densely populated community. We're getting very few new streets, but I still supported it. North Phoenix will get them, Levine will get them, and we need to do that. We need to think about the entire city here. So that's why I supported it. Now, the other, the last thing I'll just mention, because I think it needs to be said. Frankly, there's a couple of members who continue to say they're not getting their fair share when it comes to street repair or new streets, yet probably have never, ever, ever supported anything to bring new streets to this city, or street repair to the city, for that matter. So while that continues to happen, there are other people on this council that will continue to do that and advocate for every single neighborhood, including their own districts. So, you know, now we're moving from security over to philosophically what we think of light rail and transportation, but it's very, it's very important to our city. And going back to this item, again, I support it.
Councilman DeCisio?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to echo what Councilman Waring had just said, too. I think what the public is starting to see right now are the negative impacts of light rail. You cannot discount the fact that's $161 million a mile for capital and $1 million a year for operational costs costing the taxpayers. I don't hear anyone say they want light rail in my district. And for those of you that would like to see it in your district, I want you to think twice about it, because you're starting to see the negative impact today. So the same type of logic that I've heard when the City of Phoenix did the Sheridan is the same kind of logic I'm hearing here today. These are boondoggles. These boondoggles are going to create more of a deficit, a structural deficit for the City of Phoenix, and you're going to have to maintain those things. So I'm going to be voting yes on this, because it's not the public's fault that they got stuck with this. But at the end of the day, this is what happened. It's the people that supported this that did this to the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Gallego?
Thank you. As we talk about new roads in areas, including the Levine area of my own district, I think we should also remember that impact fees are an important part of paying for those new roads, so that the new growth in that area will help pay for it. And that's important to keep in mind. But we also ought to look citywide. I was glad to support investments in this agenda around the Mayo campus in District Two. I don't know that a lot of my residents will be up there visiting the partnership that ASU is undergoing in that area, but I think we will all benefit as a city if we look far and wide. We need to have multiple modes of transportation. We have a fabulous downtown, but you, already we're close to gridlock some days. We can't keep growing if we don't have all other modes of transportation. We need to have light rail and other modes of transportation, bike share, to get people moving if we want to keep growing and keep having an even more vibrant downtown. So those are important assets to have. And overwhelmingly, as Councilwoman Williams said, the light rail is very safe. If we look at ridership numbers, it looks like 99% of the riders who are riding the rail are doing so safely. We do have some problems, as we do with any mode of transportation. We have people doing crazy things on our streets as well. They are very few and far between, but they keep our first responders very busy. But overall, it's been very successful, and if we look at the numbers of people riding light rail, and the cost, it compares very favorably to the number of people who use the 51, which was also very expensive to build. We're a diverse, growing city, and we need multiple modes of transportation.
Vice Mayor, if I just may comment, in order of magnitude, the ridership of the light rail system just within the Phoenix alone is about 14 million riders per year. We can look at about 1 and 1/2 million riders per month. And based on some numbers provided by the Transit Enforcement Unit, we have right around 100 arrests along, by the Transit Enforcement Unit. That includes rail and other arrests as well from the Transit Enforcement Unit. So it's actually much more than 99%. It's almost 100% of riders are safe. So it's a very, very, very safe system, to many of your points. And I, so I just want to give that order of magnitude and perspective.
Councilman Waring? Yes!
I appreciate that. So just to, since we're talking about perspective and ridership, so is it still true, less than 2% of the trips taken per day are on light rail? Trips collectively, meaning cars, buses, everything? That's what it was before? Less than 2%? Is that still a fair number?
Isn't it about the same, it's about the, 51 is about the same length as the rail system and the equivalent trips?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Gallego, Councilman Waring, I think the question of that is really about, what are you, 2% of what? If it's the entire county or the entire region, that's one thing, and then you have to compare it in that order of magnitude to something that's an equivalent stretch, like the 51 or something else. So I think we have to put the, whatever percentage it is, I don't know what that is, in context of the larger region and the area in which it serves.
The 51's been mentioned a couple times. I guess I'll just say this, we're talking about those like they're equivalent things. So you can get on that lane of the 51, which I assume they're picking, because I commute it every day, I don't know. So a lane of the 51, that's fantastic news, but you know, there's something you can do with that lane of the 51 that you can't do with light rail. You can get on that lane of the 51, and you can drive to the Pacific Ocean. You can drive to Chicago. You can get there, and you'll have a car. With light rail, you can take it to Mesa. And that's pretty much it. And that'll pretty much be it in 2050, too. So, and you'll get there, and you won't have a vehicle. So not totally sure what you're going to do then. One thing, though, is the mindset, and I heard it yesterday as well. We want to do something up here, and we want somebody else to pay for it. Yesterday, it was, we want to change the name of the street, we want the people who live on the street to pay for it, and they're just supposed to like it. And that's it. We didn't ask their opinion, we're just going to go do it. In this, you've got a bunch of districts that either have or will have light rail. And so the last statistic I had, it was 53% of each light rail trip by an individual is subsidized by a non-riding taxpayer. Is that right? It's 47% is paid for by the ticket, 53% is paid for... Now, I think that's a 2015 statistic, because it's been about a year since I've heard it. There is no cost recovery in this, right? Not 100% anyway.
Councilman Waring, it does not recover, it's full cost, and that's approximately...
Yeah. So, so all the taxpayers in my district are paying for light rail. Because there's no light rail anywhere even close to my district, they'd have a heck of a commute just to get to a stop, and will for 20 years or more, if it ever gets to the Paradise Valley Mall. Again, it's fantastic that it's moving, I'm going to stick with that statistic until you guys tell me wrong, because I've been briefed on this a number of times. So if it's moving less than 2% of the day in the city, county, whatever, we can discuss that later. That means a boatload of people, all the taxpayers in my district, are paying for this, and probably very few of them are riding it, because they'd have a long drive to get to it. And the folks up here are asking, you people in District Two who might be listening to this diatribe, they're saying you should like that, that that's fantastic, that you love that. We're comparing it to Mayo Hospital, which is just, I don't know, which would you rather have? I guess I'll just leave it to residents to decide. People come from all around the world to go to Mayo Hospital. I don't know that people come from all around the world to ride our light rail. Not sure about that. Again, my actual angst with this started off because the city denied that there would ever be a problem with security. I'm glad that Amanda amended her statement, but it did sound like maybe there are problems elsewhere. I just happen to know people, and I mean, I guess that's considered good. We got more problems than we knew, fantastic. But, but again, the idea is I'm supposed to vote for stuff like this and like it. That, that doesn't make a lot of logical sense, not at all. Meanwhile, the mindset seems to be, we're supposed to just take stuff from other people, use it for our own purposes, and they're supposed to enjoy that experience. Well, I for one am rebelling against that mindset. So I appreciate the time, I won't go on and on, but I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you. What I do have to say is, as being the fifth-largest city, there are a lot of growing pains that have happened and are continuing to happen as we continue to grow and we do infill. I happen to represent the area on 19th Avenue in Camelback. That area, for the last 20 years, of all those that represented that area, have always, it's always been, and if we look at our reports, because I study the reports, an area where everybody merges. It's high density, if you read the article in the paper, it's high density, a lot of people in that one area moving in and out. So before light rail, there has always been people moving in and out of that area, and many people, of all diversity, of all income. So now with the light rail there, there's more people moving. So it doesn't necessarily mean that the light rail has then brought in all these problems and issues. What it means is, we as a city, and as, as security, as a police, as our first responders, really need to look at that area, and how do we move everybody in and out of there in a very safe manner? It's just like throughout our whole city, every one of us wants to make sure that every individual and every constituent, every tourist, anybody that comes, visits our city, that it's safe, and they can move in and out of the city, regardless if you're on a road, if you're a bicyclist, or if you're on the light rail. And so I think the bigger issue, and the bigger conversation, is really, how do we move more effectively and efficiently throughout our whole city, and meanwhile, keeping our city safe? And so some of us, I happen to be privileged in the sense that I happen to have a car, I happen to have, be in a position where I can own a car. And not all of us are in that position, especially young youth that rely on buses and transit and light rail to move in and out to get their education. Others also use it to get to their jobs. And we need to be able, as a city, to open up access to everybody to move in within our city, and be able to have, them be able to have the means to go to where they want to go. And so I think that's the bigger picture for the whole city. And so I'm very supportive of this. I've seen the impact that it has, since the first line of light rail was on Central and Central City, I have seen the nuances of the growth and the nuances of how we manage with the light rail, of building the light rail, and of managing. But what I can tell you on the central core, where most, most of the growth is happening in that area, businesses, because of light rail, businesses are attracted to go there. That means more jobs, that means more money for our economy, that means a great, vibrant city. And so I'm just making that point, because I think all of us, in certain ways, and all of us do, as elected officials, want to make sure that the city is safe. So roll call.
Vice Mayor, real quick.
Yes, sorry, Councilman Nowakowski?
So I was just sitting here, listening, and one of the things that I hear, and one of the experiences I have on the light rail, is really that individuals that go on for free. And we have officers and security that are kicking people off the light rail. It's mostly the people that are, the paid customers, that are there for a service that they need. It's those individuals that go on for free. In the future, maybe we can look into somehow, some way, the best practices of other cities, not allowing people to go on to free. I know we have that trust, but it doesn't seem like that trust system is working for us, and it's, it's really controlling those individuals that aren't buying those tickets and that are abusing the light rail and taking free rides. And I can understand, if I was a person that wanted to go into a nice, air-conditioned light rail, I would jump on it also and try to ride all day.
Vice Mayor Pastor, Councilman Nowakowski. You do bring up an excellent point, the Councilman. We do, Valley Metro does look at other light rail systems to benchmark where we are, to make sure that we are keeping track of those that aren't paying. With Valley Metro's, on private security, they do check the fares. And on average, we run between 6 and 8% of the passengers do not have a valid fare, which is very low and is very much, it's low for what we see in other systems. But we need to continue to look at ways to reduce that even more and address any of those perception issues. A lot of that's what we hear, Councilman, is a lot of passengers will have a pass that nobody sees them tap, because it's a once-a-month pass, or it's an ASU pass where they do it once in the semester. But the perception, then, is that they're getting on for free because they didn't see them tap. But having the fare enforcement, security folks on the train checking has definitely helped with that perception. But we continue to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams, I think, did you second the amendment, the new, Chris, is it the new? Yeah, okay. Okay, we're ready for roll call, then.
Oh, and Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Councilman DeCisio?
A very quick one.
Please.
The light rail, the individuals that are working on it, you may want to start thinking about putting in maybe a breakfast, lunch, and dinner on the train, because if you go from one end to the other end, you will be riding it all day. And you'll be able to have your breakfast, your lunch, and your dinner on it.
Okay, great. I will, are you, is that your new, is that going to be like a vendor thing, or, I'm not really sure about that one. Okay, thank you.
You may want to think about it. Because you're going to be on it all day, driving from one end to the other end.
All right. You and I will sit there and enjoy ourselves. Roll call.
DeCisio?
No, I mean, yes, I'm sorry, on this one, yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Stark? Valenzuela?
Yes.
Waring? Williams?
Yes.
Pastor?
Come on, Waring, yes.
Mayor Stanton?
I want to explain my, my vote on this one.
Oh, sorry, Mayor.
That's okay, no, no, that's all right. I appreciate your patience with me. Look, I've been on this council a long period of time, serving as city council and as mayor, and at various times, members of the council have tried in the past to create a us-versus-them dynamic with regard to residents of their district, vis a vis the rest of the city. I can tell you, that has never worked. In the specific instance we're talking about now, light rail and whether light rail was a good investment or not, particularly in a, in a particular district, let me tell you something. Arizona State University, downtown Phoenix, is great for the entire city. That campus is not there if we don't make our investment in light rail. Hosting events of the highest magnitude, like the Super Bowl, which we had a million people in downtown Phoenix, that event doesn't come to our community without our investment in light rail. $9 billion of investment, public and private investment along the light rail, including some great developments by developers that have been supportive of all council members on the city council, that doesn't happen without our investment in light rail. The largest employer in the state of Arizona, Banner Health, moved their headquarters to be on a public transportation line, specifically light rail, at Central and Thomas. All of those decisions benefit all of us in the city, all citizens across the city. And so I just think that, again, I've seen it happen before, and it's always end up not working, the attempt to create an us-versus-them dynamic between certain districts and the rest of the, the rest of the city. And if we need to do a small increase for transportation so that we can make the light rail as safe as possible, that's a small investment for such a big payout for our entire community. And so I was just shaking my head as I heard some of the debate and saying, it takes me back. Again, I've heard it over the years, and it's never been successful, and frankly, it's not going to be successful now. Light rail has been, that investment has been a great investment for the entire city, and that's why the citizens of Phoenix overwhelmingly supported it when the, when the proposition was on the ballot almost two years, almost two years ago. So certainly, we swore in the motion, I think this is a good course correction for a great investment for the people of our community. And my vote, yes.
Okay, thank you. It passes, it passes eight to one. Thank you very much.
Move approval of 111?
Second. Oh, go ahead. We have no cards. Ready, roll call.
DeCisio?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Valenzuela?
Yes.
Waring?
Come on, Waring.
Williams?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton?
Yes.
Eight to one, thank you.
Move approval of 114?
Second.
Second.
Bro, any cards? Okay, I have them all in favor. C.J. Haggard, Nicole Holmstead, Sylvia Duerta, and Connor Ditionmaker? I hope I did it. They're all in favor. Does anybody want to speak? No? Okay. Roll call.
DeCisio?
Are you off? Okay.
Gallego?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Stark? Valenzuela?
Yes.
Waring? Williams?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton?
Yes.
Did I hear Waring say yes? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
114.
Dang it. Shoot. Seven, one. Shouldn't have said anything. Delta's giving me the look. Okay, that's good. Item 124, is this the one that I have to open up?
Have a staff report.
Alan, I was told that we, I can just open it up to the public.
Vice Mayor, that is correct. We don't have any opposition here. It was on for a public hearing because of advertising issue.
Open the public hearing. Anybody? Nothing? Close the public hearing. Wow, that's really fun.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to move to approve, per the Planning Commission recommendation, and adopt the related ordinance.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCisio?
Oh, is there any questions? No? Okay.
Gallego?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Valenzuela? Waring?
Come on, Waring.
Williams?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton?
Yes.
Eight to zero, oh, what was it? Eight, zero, right? That's the end of our meeting. Meeting adjourned.